Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee meeting. Let's see, would the Secretary take the role?
Secretary Geneva, I'm here. Vice Chair Martini, here. Chair Johnson Mossad?
Here.
Mayor Disorga?
Here.
Member Sexton?
Here.
Member Childs?
Waiting for the turn green.
Here.
We're all present and you have a quorum?
All right, we convened at 6:20, 6:30 PM, just changed. This meeting is being recorded by GCTV. If any other persons present are also recording, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Don't see anybody. Great. We will begin with public comment, or is anyone signed up for public comment tonight? You have three minutes, just say your name and...
My name is Melissa Webb and I live in Greenfield. So, I guess one thing that I like to always talk about is redistricting, because that's a hot topic, but I have some, I guess, positive news through the calendar fundraiser, which raised over seventeen, let's say that's right, seventeen thousand dollars. Through a lot of dedication from all the PTOs pulling together and working together, the three elementary PTOs are hoping to get together at some point and come forward with some ideas of our own as a way to help with the redistricting process. So, that is what I have to say on that. Oh, oh, the health and wellness policy. Here, I'm coming for you now. So, the fifth grade did an amazing job. They had penny wars where they raised almost three thousand dollars unless, a little over, I think a little over three thousand dollars in less than a week. Pretty impressive. Got very competitive, was very awesome. They donated fifty percent of the profit to Shriners, and the other was left for them to do, kind of within boundaries of what they wanted. So, they have come up with multiple ideas on how to do it, and one of them was to bring in an ice cream truck, and now with the health and wellness policy, they are not able to bring in an ice cream truck and all have a little bit of ice cream. That was just one of the things. So, you know, when we're making policies and trying to come up with better ideas and better ways, sometimes something that may be unhealthy in like a large quantity could be a nice little treat for these kids who really work their tails off to bring in hundred dollar bills and boxes of pennies. That is all.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, hearing done. We will move on to our process of electing a new school committee member. We had letters of interest from Keith Urquiel, Melody Goodwin, Isaac Mass, Jesus Leva, and Sean Hoyt. Sean Hoyt has withdrawn his name from consideration. Isaac, Keith, and Jesus could not be with us tonight for various reasons. Melody is here. Melody, do you have a statement you would like to make to the committee? Please come forward. You have three minutes.
Who's got the timer?
I do.
Okay, tell me when. Good evening. My name is Melody Goodwin, and I would like to be a member of the school committee. I respect the work you're doing, and I would be an asset to your committee. I've been an educator for forty-one years and can proudly say every decision I made as a teacher and administrator was based on what I believed was best for children. Children always come first. I've taught grades K through twelve. I've been a student council advisor, yearbook advisor, math counts coach, and a member of many committees. I come from a family of teachers. Two of my aunts were high school English teachers. My sister was a special ed teacher, and my mother was a home ec teacher, which is why I don't cook. Education was a priority in our family and service a way of life. Somebody was always studying at our kitchen table. I was also a vice principal, principal, and district administrator. As a vice principal, I designed a project that required seventh graders to pass the US citizenship test to participate in a field trip to Washington DC. A few years ago, I took some friends to DC and I contacted Jim McGovern's office to get a tour of the Capitol for our group. Our guide from McGovern's office walked up to me, shook my hand, and said, "You are my middle school principal." When you brought me here in seventh grade, I knew I would come back here to work. The hearts of teachers expand when we find out we make a difference. Educators make a difference. I served as an administrator in Greenfield for ten years. I've watched the Greenfield School Committee meetings for over twenty years, first as a resident and then as an administrator. Some people watch reality TV shows. Principals watch school committee meetings. The amazing Buzzin and Brakow, Carol Jacobs, Jim Devine, and Mike Smith were the leaders when I first started to watch school committee on Sunday afternoons. Later, Mike Smith would become my superintendent in South Hadley, and later, I would dedicate a school in his name. Michael E. Smith Middle School was my first school. It serves eight hundred students in grades five through eight, and they're still taking children to Washington DC. I lived in Greenfield and worked in South Hadley for nine years. Fate would have it that I would meet and learn from the people I watched on Sunday afternoons. I retired from Newton School three years ago. I served as a GPS administrator for ten years. I worked for four superintendents in Greenfield and have watched the challenges the school committee faces. I know the history of Greenfield. I know the GPS schools. I know the children and the families of Greenfield. Since I retired, I've been subbing at Franklin County Tech and enjoying a K-12 life. I share classrooms with young adults who I watched learn to read and tie their shoes. Children are the future, and they deserve the best education we can give them. And a special shout-out tonight to Jay Patinsky's journalism class. They had to write speeches this week, so they graded mine. So, I know they're watching tonight and making sure I didn't talk too fast. The three-minute limit was tough today, and I was told to breathe, so I've been breathing. And a really great thanks to the children, and they want to know how come you guys don't get paid. So, it was a real example of how a speech makes a difference. Thank you for your service to the Greenfield School District.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you very much. So, just a little orientation to the process or how we vote on, oh, first I want to check, I neglected to check my computer, if anyone joining us by Zoom wanted to participate in public comment. If so, please come off mute now. Okay, not seeing anybody. So, the process for the school committee to select a new member to join us is that we, we vote, and if we have a majority of members voting for a single candidate, that person becomes a school committee member. The mayor has agreed to swear in. If we select somebody tonight, they can be sworn in tonight and come right up to that chair and start serving on the school committee. That's how I came onto the school committee in May of 2019, I think it was. If, if we hit an impasse and there are, it's a tie vote, the city council president, per our city charter, selects the successful candidate. And so, thank you, President Bottomley, for agreeing to be here tonight in case we hit an impasse. I'm very hopeful that we, as a committee, may be able to select our, our own member without having to rely on that, but appreciate you being there as a safeguard. So, any questions about that, about how that, that part of the process will go? All right. My proposal is that we not begin by making motions for one candidate or another, but rather that we kind of suspend our normal rules of order to have a consensus-building discussion that I would facilitate to see if we might be able to reach at least some consensus or at least narrow the field down to two, to two candidates before we vote, because otherwise, it can be a little bit chaotic with this many number of people applying, and I feel like that might be a useful way to go. So, could I hear a motion to suspend our normal rules of order for a consensus discussion? There's a motion from Mayor Disorga. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Second from Member Sexton. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we have suspended our normal rules of order for a consensus-building discussion. In my days of facilitating strategic planning sessions with nonprofits, what we would do is a method not of, of voting, but of polling, to get a sense of kind of where the energy is around, around a certain choice. And so, I'd like you to imagine that I have given you each two stickers, and that the names of the candidates are on a, on a flip chart on the wall. Keith, Melody, Isaac, and Jesus. And you have two stickers. You can do whatever you want with them. You can put them on, two stickers on one candidate or one on two different candidates. Just to get a picture, if you had to choose where, where your energy was in terms of selecting a school committee candidate, where would you put those stickers? So, that's how I'd like to begin the discussion and maybe just going around. Could we start with you, Mayor, just because you happen to be there on the left?
My two stickers are Mel Goodwin and Isaac Mass.
Okay, thank you. Elizabeth, Member Geneva?
I'm not sure of my two stickers yet.
You want to think a little longer?
I would like to think a little longer.
All right. Member Martini?
Goodwin and Urquiel.
And I will put my two stickers on Jesus. Member Sexton?
Right now, both of my stickers are going for Melody Goodwin.
All right, two stickers for Melody, and Member Childs.
Well, I think any of the people could do a great job, and I would highly recommend that if you're not picked tonight, to go ahead and run next time, please. That said, my stickers, I think I'm gonna have to go with the mayor with Mel and Isaac.
Mel and Isaac, great. Okay. So, with that, we have one sticker for Mr. Urquiel, one for Ms. Goodwin, one for Mr. Mass, and one for Mr. Leva. I mean, I'm sorry, two for Isaac Mass and two for Jesus Leva. So, one, five, two, and two. As part of our, oh, we haven't gone back to Member Geneva, sorry. Where are your stickers?
My stickers will have to go with the mayor and Member Childs on Melody and, and Isaac Mass.
All righty. Excellent. So, to update our sticker tally, we have one for Keith Urquiel, one, two, three, four, five, six for Melody Goodwin, three for Isaac Mass, two for Jesus Leva. And so, that is where our stickers are at the moment. I'm wondering if we could have a consensus decision at this point just to remove Mr. Urquiel from consideration with only one star? Would there be any opposition to doing that? I'm not hearing any. So, for our consensus discussion, let's assume that our choices now are between Melody, Isaac, and Jesus. I guess one place to start would be just to hear from some, some people about why they're supporting different candidates. So, could we hear two people say why you are supporting Melody Goodwin? Yes, Mayor Disorga?
I would be voting for Mel because she has extensive experience and knowledge in education, and not only does she have experience as a teacher and an administrator, she has crafted budgets as a principal, and these are the strengths that will help me, and I believe all of us, as we face extraordinarily, extraordinary challenges with declining enrollment and skyrocketing costs. But I'm delighted that we had so many people that stepped forward.
Great, thank you. Anyone else like to speak for Melody Goodwin?
I feel like I'm the only person who put both of my stickers on one candidate, that I should probably say something about why I did that. I would say that when I was first coming around and trying to get involved in education, before I even made a decision to try to join this board, Mel's name came up as someone that I needed to know, who could help me understand the pulse, help me understand history, help me understand what's going on in our schools. So, I never forgot that, that it was already, without me even really asking, who should I know? They were saying, "If you're involved in education, you should know this person." Second, since the nomination period, I have received several emails or pulled aside conversations in the store, you know, people contacting me, voicing their support, having witnessed what Melody has been able to do in the district, having witnessed the work, and being very active in the community, being able to think creatively about the solutions to our problems, and I think that those are things that we desperately need right now as part of our leadership team, because we do have a lot of work that is, that needs to be doing, and we need someone who's got the experience and the energy, and who's an anchor in, in the community.
Thank you very much. Would anyone like to speak to why you put a sticker with Isaac Mass? Yes, please, Member Childs.
So, one of the things that people might not know unless they do a Freedom of Information Act request is that Isaac emails the committee, and from that, we can tell that his heart and his investment is in the school system. Additionally, his prior legal experience and city council experience do give him some institutional knowledge, making him one of the candidates who is more likely to be able to jump right in and be effective quickly. And, I mean, he's such a big part of the community with the movie theater, and I know one of my biggest experiences with that movie theater are the school fundraisers there that the kids love and helps them so much. So, he is someone who does do a lot of service in the community.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to Isaac Mass? Please, Member Geneva?
I spoke with each of the candidates, all, all three of them. I didn't get a chance to speak with Sean, but I spoke with all three of them, Jesus, Melody, and Isaac, for about an hour each. And it was really wonderful and illuminating, and I had great conversations with each one of them, and I would feel comfortable with either of our stickered candidates moving forward, because I think everyone's heart was really in the right place, and everyone was showing bravery, putting their name forward, and real care, and thought for our community. And my conversation with Isaac was actually really good, and I think that he has some great ideas, and I was pleasantly surprised that we were aligned on quite a few things. So, it was nice to have a conversation with somebody that I maybe wouldn't have had in the first place. So, I think we made a bit of a friendship, and so I think that he would do a great job on this board, as well as I think Melody Goodwin would.
Okay, thank you very much. I will speak about Jesus Leva, having been the person who put both my stickers there, and he has a total of two stickers, both for me right now. I think that Jesus has been committed and interested in the schools and funding for the schools for a long time, and has been watching us closely, and is very impassioned, and cares a lot, and is very, very bright. And I really appreciated having him with us at the legislative advocacy training that was put on by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and I think it just, it just speaks to his engagement in caring about, about making sure that our students have what they need to reach their goals. So, with that, I think one, one piece of context that might be useful, since Isaac has a spouse who works in the schools, there are certain kind of rules that need to, he would need to abide by related to that, or certain votes that he'd have to recuse from. So, Superintendent, could you share what you learned about, about that, just so folks know?
I just have a note, the notes on my phone, so... There would have to be a conflict of interest disclosure. The State Ethics Commission has conflict of interest form that would have to be filed with the city. Then, anything with a potential financial gain would require the committee member to recuse themselves. Examples of that could be health insurance issues, grievances, the budget line relevant to their spouse or family member, any negotiation, discussion, or any impact, any issue that generally impacts their spouse's employment group generally, that member would have to recuse themselves.
Thank you. Good information for us to have. Yes, Mayor Disorga?
That was my one concern that I had, because when he served on city council, he always recused himself in the whole school budget.
Okay, good, good to know. All right. Are there any other additional comments that any school committee members would like to make at this time? All right, I'm gonna propose another round of sticker voting, but this time, you only get one sticker. So, we can, we will start with you, Member Childs, and go around the other way this time?
Mine goes for Mel.
Mine also goes for Mel.
Okay, mine stays with Jesus. Okay, Member Martini?
Melody Goodwin.
Melody Goodwin. Okay. Member Geneva?
I will change my sticker to Jesus.
Jesus, okay. And...
Melody Goodwin.
Melody Goodwin. All right. Well, with that, let's see, I guess it's a consequential decision, so I'll extend the conversation a little bit longer, but I guess one, I'm wondering if we might, at this point, decide to remove Isaac Mass from consideration? Any opposition to doing that? Not hearing any. So, I think we have now narrowed the choice to, to candidates with a strong preference with four stickers for Melody Goodwin and two for Jesus. Let's see, I guess I'd just like to have, go around and allow each member who wants to make a statement or share your thinking to do so. So, is there anyone who'd like to begin with where your thinking is now? Mayor Disorga?
From where I started with, but I think that was the consensus of the group, so... And I think that she has the experience and the knowledge, like twenty-five, thirty years of experience in every part of this, so I'm definitely voting for Mel.
All right, great. Any other comments? Member Childs?
I believe that Mel will be highly effective.
All right, great. Any other comments? Yes, Member Martini?
I would just say that I have personal experience witnessing Mel Goodwin's commitment to student achievement, the outcomes of our students, and to evidence-based instruction ahead of her time, and I can't forget that and will always appreciate it. I do greatly appreciate Jesus for his advocacy for school funding. That is something that not very many people take the time to invest themselves in and really crunch and understand numbers and involve themselves at the State House for, and, and I really respect that. But when it comes down to having to make a choice, my, my sticker goes for Mel.
Any other comments? All right, I guess I will say that I, while I, I do really value the experience that Melody Goodwin brings to the application, I, I feel it also has been a bit of a double-edged sword in the past, sometimes, for the school committee to have former administration leaders serving on the committee. So, that's, that's one of my, my reasons against, against Ms. Goodwin's candidacy, so... All right, well, with that, I guess I would take a motion to resume our normal rules of order and initiate a voting process, unless anyone else has anything else they want to add, before we do that motion. We have a motion to resume our normal rules of order?
So moved.
A motion from Member Sexton and a second from a Member Childs. Is there a, a motion to appoint Melody Goodwin to the Greenfield School Committee?
So moved.
Motion from Member Martini. Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right, let us vote. Can we do it by roll call, please, Member Geneva?
Yes. Secretary Geneva, I'm a yes. Vice Chair Martini?
Yes.
Chair Johnson Mossad?
No.
Mayor Disorga?
Yes.
Member Sexton?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is five to one. Congratulations, Melody Goodwin, on joining the Greenfield School Committee. If you'd like to come forward, the, the mayor will administer your oath of office, and you can join us at the table. And President Bottomley, thank you very much for coming, but your services are not needed. Right?
Did you make the motion to?
Let's see, let's...
Second the last motion. You made the motion to appoint, and who was the second?
I asked Shane to come up, because we've done this on...
Oh, nice.
...city council before, and you couldn't hear it on television.
Great, lovely.
Raise your right hand.
I think so, too.
Aye. State your name.
I, Melody Goodwin.
Hold the mic right up to whoever's talking.
I, Melody Goodwin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially...
And to the best of my ability, perform the duties of the office.
And to the best of my abilities, perform the duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
In accordance with the ordinances?
In accordance with the ordinances?
And the charter of the City of Greenfield.
And the charter of the City of Greenfield.
The Constitution and general laws of the Commonwealth.
The Constitution and the general laws of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, great. We are moving on to a report of student representatives to the committee. Student representative tonight.
This one's rather short tonight, so Student Council had a very successful trip to the state conference last month in Hyannis. We'd like to give a shout-out to Carly Blanchard, who is the unsung hero of western Massachusetts. We'd like to give a shout out to Carly Blanchard, who is the unsung hero of Western Massachusetts. Greenfield was once again a gold council of excellence, and an additional highlight was raising $1,500 as a school for the Special Olympics Polar Plunge. On March 22nd, we held our annual bleacher wars and Spring Olympic Games, and the gym looked amazing. The seniors won first place for their Men in Black theme, and with this, and with their points, they also earned the Class Cup competition for the 2024 year. Student Council is encouraging everyone to get a blue bag and pick up trash around town for Earth Day that will take place this month. Bags are available at the school from Ms. Bennett. Weather has been wreaking havoc in the athletic world, according to Coach K. Boys and girls are the only, for track, have the only, let me restart that. Boys and girls track are the only teams that have competed. Girls beat Turner's Falls 94 to 45, and boys beat Franklin Tech 89 to 52. We're wishing for better weather soon, and you can go to Arbiter Live to get sports schedules. Twenty-five GHS travelers depart this evening for a 10-day adventure in France, during which they will visit Paris, the Lower Valley, and the Normandy Coast. Please wish them bon voyage. French Club is also looking forward to their Spring Coffee House on Thursday, May 9th, as well as co-hosting a group of French students from Nantes, France, with Frontier and Hopkins from May 3rd to May 12th. The library club welcomed the bestselling author and illustrator Jarrett Krososka to GHS last Tuesday. He spoke to the entire school about his career path, writing graphic memoirs, and the challenges he faced growing up with parents struggling with addiction. There was a reception for a smaller group of students afterwards in the library, where they got to meet the author individually and have him sign a copy of his graphic memoirs that they got to keep. This program was generously funded by the Friends of the Greenfield Public Library, the Opioid Task Force, the Massachusetts Library Board of Library Commissioners, and the Institute of Museum and Library Services. AV Club will be working on student projects in preparation for the Film Festival next month, and last but not least, Spectrum is celebrating the Day of Silence/ Break the Silence Day this April by asking members of the GHS community to take a vow of silence for a day or wear a rainbow ribbon in support of the LGBTQ+ community of staff and students. That concludes the brief report for today, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Shane. Now we'll move on to reports of the administration, and we have the Business Manager, Andy Pickett, here by Zoom, so let's see if I can get the audio working for that. Andy, do you want to come off mute?
Yes, everyone, you have your reports.
Give me just a second to do a sound check here, Andy. I think you're not quite loud enough. Let's see, try again.
How about now?
That's good. Let me check with our GCTV friends. Is that loud enough for you all?
Testing, one, two, testing.
GCTV, is that loud enough for you?
All right. Can you test one more time?
Test one more time.
Testing, testing, one, two, testing.
That's good. Go ahead.
Okay, you have your, in your packet, the year-to-date budget report for both the local budget, the revolving accounts, and the capital projects. Nothing new to report from the last month, other than we've been routinely reviewing open purchase orders and encumbrances and salary encumbrances, and making the changes as we do our normal year-end closing process. We've been meeting with technology regarding the purchasing of the Chromebooks that they're going to be doing for end of the year, and also getting ready to do our final reclass for special education tuitions for the required amount of circuit breaker that we need to use for the year. I can answer any questions that you might have on anything on any of these reports.
Not seeing any questions for you, Andy. So I think you're all set.
Okay.
And if you don't mind continuing to watch via GCTV, I can.
I am, absolutely.
Shut down my Zoom.
Absolutely.
Okay, bye-bye. All right, next we have the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Karen Patnott.
A few updates on professional development. The district administrative team rolled out Part One of the scaffolding and checking for understanding at March 27th faculty meeting, and this afternoon, we delivered Part Two at today's faculty meeting. We have met and done learning walk number one with the SSOS team members, and we have passed out the aggregate data to all of our principals, along with their instructional leadership teams, that will be reviewing it and using it to do next steps for instructional strategies. Some curriculum updates with our civics grant. Ms. Immerman took eighth grade to Old Sturbridge Village, and they had a great day today, even with the bad weather, unfortunately, but over 80 students were able to attend a recreation of an 1830s town meeting, and I heard it was phenomenal, so very happy that they got to do that. Mr. Martin has organized a field trip to Amherst Cinemas tomorrow. They're going to view One Life, a documentary about Sir Nicholas Winton and the power of how one person can make a change. This directly links with his World War II unit that the students are wrapping up, and there are continued conversations about agency and what one person can do and make change in the world. We had some Title I-sponsored elementary field trips. Our third and fourth grade students at each elementary school have or will visit the Greenfield Public Library over the course of the next four weeks. They get a tour of the children's room, they engage in a scavenger hunt, they learn about the library and summer programming, and then at the end, they get to engage in an art activity where they decorate their own bookmark that they take home. I heard back from Darlene Rehor, the principal at Newton, and apparently it was phenomenal, so thank you to the Greenfield Public Library for hosting us. And then tomorrow, the third and fourth grade students get to go to the high school, where they will enjoy a Pioneer Valley Symphony Concert. The concert is about Oliver Town, who's a mountain lion lost in a big city, and he finds his way back home by talking to animals that he encounters, and this experience is all done through their orchestra music, so they're really looking forward to that. And something I didn't add that Shane reminded me of, the author that visited the high school found an hour and a half in his day to come to the middle school and talk to the fifth graders, and he wrote a middle school book called The Lunch Lady Series, and Title I funded a book for each of those students. And Jarrett was so kind to the fifth grade and did a nice presentation, and we thought that he wouldn't be able to sign them, but he stayed for the remainder of the time, so each child got a signed book by him, so it was really appreciated, and the kids were really excited to have that experience, so I wanted to share that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent.
So just a brief reminder about the staffing process that we're going to be going through. You'll see post, positions have been posted and more will be posted. That doesn't mean all of those positions are vacant. Anyone who has a waiver of their teaching license, we do need to repost the position. So it's the same process we've been utilizing, so please don't panic. I'd also like to share, we have hired a few positions already for next year. We've filled one of our school psychologist positions, very happy that someone who did internship with us this year is staying on, and we have also hired our two music teachers for next year. The elementary music vacancy has been filled for next year, and we were able to fill the instrumental music teacher for the elementary level, so that's very exciting. And we were able to fill an English language learner teacher that's filling a vacancy that was created earlier this year. So we are moving along with some of the positions, and then Karen and I are going to GCC tomorrow for a job fair, so hopefully that will be fruitful with other positions. We also will expect to have an update about our elementary principal situation shortly. The budget at this point, the mayor has forwarded a budget for the schools that would be a 4%, the school committee had voted a 5.86, but with the 4% increase, I do not anticipate the need to impact any of our staffing, and I know the vice chairs, we're working on scheduling a budget subcommittee meeting, which should be in the near future, May 1st? Okay, you can talk about that later, though. And then I know, well, I'll talk about the Eclipse, because we haven't talked about that enough. We had an Eclipse, in case anyone didn't know. We did have it, we all made it, but the important thing is I wanted to share that the Greenfield Education Foundation very generously purchased about 500 pairs of the Eclipse glasses for the district. UMass Astronomy Department donated 750 pairs, and then the district purchased the rest, so every student and staff member was able to have a pair of the Eclipse glasses, and it does appear that everyone was able to follow all the safety information that I had been sharing and the schools shared, which is fantastic, and I will not have to do another Eclipse as Superintendent. So finally, the Green River, a little bit of an update. I wasn't able to attend the subcommittee meeting last night, but so the process is really, the issue is the MSBA. Mass School Building Authority is the overseeing agency that is dictating process, and the reason that we need to be, I need to be so careful in terms of doing the process is because if we don't do it correctly, it will impact the district or the city's ability to get MSBA funding in the future. So clearly, we need to make sure we do all the right steps. So right now, what I have to create notice that I need to ask the mayor and the chair of the school committee, they will need to sign off, as will I, and then what happens after that, there is an audit of the finances around Green River, there would be a, I can't think of it, can't think of the word, just lost it. Basically, they would do evaluation of the building, and then there would be some determination about the status of the loan. So I have a contact out to my contact with MSBA, so that I can clarify the exact protocols, so that we don't make a misstep, but I just want to share, it's going to take a little bit of time. The building has been vacant for about four years, so, you know, I am going to need a little bit of time to finish the process, and then some of the remaining process is going to be dictated by how quickly or not quickly MSBA does things. So it's not going to be a situation resolved prior to my departure from Greenfield. Karen's being kept updated on the situation, will be kept updated, as will all of you, but again, we need to make sure we're doing it very thoughtfully and correctly. So just wanted to make sure, I know there's some urgency in the community, but we need to balance that with accuracy. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for the Superintendent or Assistant Superintendent? Yes, Mayor Disorga?
I'd like to thank you for your hard work on that, and I actually can't imagine, but I had a question about the job fair. Well, my first question was going to ask, you and Karen are not looking for jobs, are you?
I most, I most definitely am not.
Okay, just adding a little humor to the evening. So could you just tell me a little bit more about that? Is that for, like, see, who goes to the job fair?
I'm.
Is that?
I believe I'll defer to Karen on this.
Okay.
I've attended in the past. They have tables set up in the large room, they call their cafeteria, I think, maybe, over at GCC, and it's anything from schools to Bay State Health to temp agencies, so they just host it, but they offer folks to come and have tables, and they can represent whatever industry they're representing with all of their openings, so we've had a lot of success in the past, because it's a lot of Greenfield folks. We also try to do as many of these as we can, so that we can have the pulse on anyone out there that's in the education field. Last night, I spent the night at UMass with their Department of Education with four other administrators, and just trying to talk to graduating seniors who might be staying in the area looking for jobs. So GCC's just one in many that we try to attend, so that we can get Greenfield Public Schools' name out there, and really advertise what we're all about, and hope to get quality employees out of any fair that we attend.
Okay, so.
It's open to the whole community, so they've advertised elsewhere, so it's not just GCC students who attend.
Right, I guess I was, I was thinking, oh, the city's always looking for people, too, so you're going looking for people that might be interested in going into education, is that right, sort of?
We are, but as Karen said, we're not going to be the only employers, prospective employers there. There are going to be a lot of different employers that candidates can speak to or wander through and pick up information from different tables. So we'll have flyers available, and our flyer has a QR code, so even if a prospective employee doesn't want to stop and talk with us, they can use their phone, take a picture of the QR code, it links to the employment page of our website, so they can just scan, you know, walk by and scan everybody's information.
Last follow-up, I premise, so if, I was, I was thinking of it the opposite way from where you are, but I'm just going to follow up with that, if I may. If sometimes we're looking for people to actually come to work for DPW or for something else, and would I reach out to you, or who would I, like?
I would have to, I can send you the contact information from the GCC folks that reached out to us.
Mm-hmm.
Can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Hearing none. We'll move on to the next item, which is our consent agenda. Our consent agenda is a list of items that we can pass all in one motion. In this case, approval of minutes from the March 13th, 2024 meeting, vote to approve the inter-district school choice seats for 2024, 2025, vote to approve the GHS field trip to New York City, vote to approve the job description for instructional assistant, and acceptance of security camera and door hardware bid. So any member who wishes to may have, ask to have one or more of these items removed from the consent agenda, if you don't wish to vote on all of them all at once. Is there anyone who wishes to remove something from the consent agenda?
Could we remove item E?
Yes, we will remove item E, acceptance of security camera and door hardware bid. Any other items? Okay, so we're, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is now items A through D.
So moved.
Motion by Member Martini, is there a second?
Seconded.
Second by Member Childs. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The consent agenda items A through D passes unanimously. We'll move on to acceptance of security camera and door hardware bid.
Andy was a primary on our work with this. Could I call him so he could weigh in?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
If that's okay? Thank you.
Okay, great, well, we'll pause for a moment for the Superintendent to reach our Business Manager.
I did read it, I think.
It's on, it's online, right?
I did read it.
Okay, we're looking for it.
Yeah, the information is in our electronic materials. Oh, sorry, yeah. Hey, Andy, it's Glenn. We're in the school committee meeting, and we need you. Is it okay if I put you on the speaker again?
[phone ringing]
Okay, great. So just to catch you up, we removed the item, acceptance of security camera and door hardware bid, from the consent agenda, so we're going to discuss that item separately. So I guess we'll start with a motion to accept the security camera and door hardware bid as presented. Is there someone to make?
So moved.
Motion by Member Martini, is there a second?
Seconded.
Second by Member Goodwin. So discussion.
Yeah, I can share that the primary reason why I wanted to pull it out is because unlike the other items, I didn't feel fully qualified to understand if it was appropriate for me to consent, because I didn't understand, like, yes, I can read through all these documents, but does this say what you wanted it to say? Does it do what you wanted it to do, and are we all comfortable? It's, and I also want to be clear that the work being proposed is modernizing and updating, but not fundamentally adding or increasing. but not fundamentally adding or increasing. And I want to, I need to be clear on this.
So yes, it does what we want it to do.
Okay.
The process is that we, the school committee had previously voted for us to enter into a contract with a designer. They worked with us to create the bid specs and put it out to bid. Diana Schindler, the city's MCPPO, reviewed everything prior to it being posted. And then following the period where it's out, we also did a vendor walkthrough where there were a fairly large number of people who came. They walked through the facilities with the designer as well as our facilities director and our IT director. And then bids were submitted. They were all submitted electronically and the designer conducted the bid opening, so to speak, looked at everything online. And the bid was awarded to the lowest responsive bidder, meaning the lowest bid that did reply with all the documents that are required and all of that. So yes, it does do what we wanted it to do. There are additions to the security measures, but security is one of the topics that it's appropriate to have an executive session, so I just want to be mindful of the Q and A.
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, there are some additions as well as some upgrades, yes.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, are we ready to vote? Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded for the committee to accept the security camera and door hardware bid as presented. So all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Member Denis and Member Sexton are saying nay, and I will abstain. The motion carries. Four, two, one. Great. Thanks, Andy. We're all set. After all that, thank you. Sure. All right. We're moving into Policy Section J, and it's listed as first read. However, because this policy section affects so much involving the kind of operation of the schools and in light of wanting to start to prepare for next year and all, we, I would like us to see if there, if the school committee would accept this policy or approve this policy for immediate implementation. And to do that, in the past, we used to, we have a policy that asks us to have a first and second reading for policies. In the past, our process has been to vote to approve it on an emergency basis. But I learned today that our, what is recommended is that we have two motions. The first to temporarily suspend our requirement for, to read a true read policy, a true read approval process, and just to accept it on a first read. So, and then after, after that, then we would vote on whether to approve it or not approve it. So the first vote is basically to say, for this particular set of policies, whether the committee wishes to or not to suspend its normal practice of having, a practice of having two readings for policies or sets of policies. And then another motion to approve the revised policy section as presented. Any questions before we do those two votes about what the process is? I see a question. Member Goodwin, can you, maybe you can say what you heard me say as well as you can and I can see what, what was missing in my explanation. Do you mind pushing your green button? Yeah. Sometimes you have to push twice. Yeah, there you go.
The first motion is to read it and come back to it? Is that what you were saying?
Uh, no. Okay, so the first motion, I guess first of all, you have to, it starts with knowing that the school committee has a policy that requires policy changes to go through two readings. So for example, the normal process would be, we'll do section E, we'll do policy EEAA, walkers and riders for a first reading tonight, and then in May, we would do a second reading. The policy would only take effect after the second reading and the second vote. But in some cases, it helps the functioning of the schools if we can enact policies effective immediately. To do that, we need to temporarily suspend our own policy of requiring one vote on one month and another vote on the next. So that's what our first vote would be about.
So I move to suspend the current practice of, oh my God, two reads. Good.
Yes, a motion to suspend our current two-reading practice for Section J students.
Seconded.
And there's a second from Mayor Disorga. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Let's vote on that, that motion, which would allow us to pass this policy section with one reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All those abstaining? One opposed? One opposed? And I'll, I guess I already voted. Well, I'll change my vote from a yea to an abstain. So we have five votes for, for yes, one vote no, and one abstention. Great. So now we will consider Section J students and the motion would be to approve Section J students as presented, effective immediately. You have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
A motion by Mayor Disorga, is there a second? Second from Member Goodwin. Any discussion? Yes, Mayor Disorga.
So, so who's the, on the policy committee again? Which ones are our policy committee?
Currently, Member Denis and myself. Member Poiroti was on the committee, but.
Right. This was the long one. This is the long policy. So I'd just like to ask and admit, I hadn't quite finished all of that. I apologize. Could you give us the highlights of the changes in that one? Or would you care to do that or not?
Well, a significant, there's a significant number of changes.
Yes, I saw that.
But the general approach for this is part of our overall overhaul of our policies. And we are being guided by that by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. The, the changes are largely to bring our policies in line with the law and also to bring them up to, to best practices. For the vast majority of the policies in this section, that was really the, the process, I guess, or what you will see in, in the revised policy document.
Thank you. It looked like you did a lot of work on that.
Well, we're very lucky that the superintendent actually does, the Mass does a lot of work for us and the superintendent does it. And so if there are any items that the school committee would like to see us take, policies you'd like to see us take a closer look at, you can do that. You can pass this and also send certain items back to us to bring back. So if there's any items that anyone's concerned about, I'm sure we'd be happy to, to put them on a future policy agenda. But I, my personal perspective is, I really want, have, want us to be in line with the law and best practice. So when in doubt, I encourage, I encourage approval of this. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, with that, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. No one knows. And any abstentions, all abstained, so, oh, two abstentions. So Member Martini and myself abstained. Everyone else approved. The motion passes. Thank you very much. Now, let me pull up my handy cheat sheet for the Section EEAA. I move that we amend policy EEAA walkers and riders as presented on first reading. Did I say that? Let me try that again. I move that we approve the first reading of amendments to policy EEAA walkers and riders on first reading as presented.
Seconded.
Ah, so that was me motioning and who seconded? Member Goodwin. Great. Discussion? I guess we could give a kind of orientation to this one?
So there was, our previous transportation coordinator, Jake, had brought up the fact that we were, the district had at some point in the past begun transporting in a manner that was inconsistent with our policy in that some areas of Greenfield that were within the mile and a half that were previously identified in the policy for elementary, the students in those areas had been receiving transportation while students just beyond that had not. So the request that we made administratively was, could the committee just clarify what the policy should be, whether you wanted to amend it to make it look more like what the practice was, or if you wanted the practice to look like what the policy was. And so Karen and I met with the bus company to make sure that any recommendations that we were talking about could be accommodated by the buses. And they said that yes, they could. And so at this point, the recommendations that were talked about at the policy subcommittee are now in line with practice. So the policy has been amended.
Any other discussion or questions?
I just wanted to flag for folks that, that updating the policy to reflect practice technically does impact some of our considerations regarding redistricting and how we will provide transportation moving forward to students who, whose parents opt to keep them in their, in their school, even if it's not the one that they would otherwise be redistricted into. And so just keeping that in mind, I don't think it's a problem, but it is something we just need to be aware of when our, when our policies impact our other policies.
Got it. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? All abstain, so motion carries, six, one. Move on to school committee reports. I just want to take a moment to thank Member Poiroti for her service on the school committee. She gutted us through some very difficult times with COVID and several different superintendent changes. And so many appreciations for your service, Member Poiroti, if you're listening. And also want to just thank everybody who submitted letters of interest to fill the vacancy. We're very lucky to have such a strong qualified candidate pool. The choices were, were difficult, but appreciate everybody who expressed interest and congratulations again to our new member, Goodwin. And so we'll move on to reports of the subcommittees, budget and finance.
Budget and finance subcommittee will next meet on May 1st at 3:00. I anticipate we will discuss a update in regards to our current budget season for FY25 and the creation of an annual budget calendar.
Sounds great. Any questions? Okay. Policy and program subcommittee, in addition to the item we voted on tonight, Member Denis did bring forward the idea of us creating a policy that would require super majorities for certain votes, such as hiring or firing of a superintendent or approval of a budget or approval of a redistricting plan. I got to speak to our attorney about that today. In practice, as you saw tonight, the policy can by a simple majority vote suspend its own policies. So if we had a super majority vote, a super majority policy, it could be, it could be suspended by a majority of this committee, so. So we'll explore it a little bit more, but I guess we're not seeing it as that much of a, you know, we, we hope and encourage ourselves and future school committees to consider having as many members at meetings as possible for important votes. But it sounds like our tools to enforce that are limited, to say the least. So that's kind of the status of that particular policy that we, we explored at our last meeting. Member Denis, anything you would add?
I did read that letter from the attorney. Thank you for going down the rabbit hole of that. The reason that I brought it is because when we go to do a professional development with MASCE, they give us best practices and that was a best practice that they said that we should adopt. So I immediately thought, why can't we just have a policy that says a super majority has to vote to change the policy rules and then it would just sort of solve itself? But it definitely seems like maybe instead of having policies collide, we could just explore it a little bit more and maybe that's not applicable to us, but I did see it happen last year and I'm thinking of the future, people in the future who are going to be making these decisions when we're not here anymore. And I would hate to have anything be taken advantage of.
Thank you. The executive subcommittee is myself, Vice Chair Martini, and Secretary Denis, and we did have a meeting and was a very lively discussion and we discussed different goals of the committee and items that are already in the queue. So I don't remember a lot of details of this moment about, about to share with you other than things you already know about, such as next month, we will be having a representative from Mass come to do a training with us about superintendent evaluation. So, so stay tuned. We'll keep meeting and keep bringing things to you in this forum. Redistricting and reorganizing ad hoc committee?
Great. Excuse me. So for those who don't know, I'm the chair of that committee, joined by Mayor Disorga and Member Childs. We met just yesterday. I will fully admit a mea culpa, I did not record that meeting. I didn't, I didn't press the record button. I will note that there is a setting on the Zoom backend that we can click that automatically records anytime you open a meeting. Just a thought. You can always pause it. You can always pause it. It would help. Anyway, we had, we have two standing agenda items so far that are perennial, and one of them is Green River School, which I think our superintendent gave a phenomenal update around, and I don't feel the need to go any deeper into it. But then also, redistricting specifically, what's our plan with actually making this happen, getting a timeline, et cetera? Our one remaining question that we had unresolved was actually, I think, just solved slash postponed by the vote we just took about walkers and riders, because our question was, do we understand the impact cost-wise on, on transporting people, transporting students to their school of choice or their school that they will choose to remain in even if they're redistricted? We just wanted to know the cost, but now that our transportation might shift in the actual routes, the suggestion from the super was to, was to wait a year and understand how that actually shakes out before we get quotes about what any additional cost might be. Am I interpreting that, your note correctly?
I do think you are accurate in that. I think we need to see what this will look like from the bus company, but I don't necessarily think it, it has to be a year.
Okay.
I think, because they'll start running the routes for next school year very soon. So I think we'll be able to get some additional information faster than that, but.
Great. Yes, that's fantastic. We can, we will touch base offline about exactly when that is happening. We, I did ask on the agenda for additional future agenda items that came up from anyone, and the one that we sort of all discussed and would like to make a plan around is developing make a plan around is developing some sort of communication plan and strategy to the community about when exactly these changes will be happening, and when parents might need to make certain decisions about whether they're keeping their kid in a school or not. But just to make sure that everyone knows what's happening, when it's happening, when they might need to do something about it, and basically be as supportive as we can, making this transition smooth for folks. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Let's see. I don't think we have an update on IT Collective Bargaining. And Amy Poiety was our representative to the Collaborative for Educational Services. So that, the next meeting, I will, I'll make appointments to fill the spots that Amy formerly held. So City Planning and Construction Representative. Anything on that?
So we met yesterday, and there were just three things that were school relevant. One of them, the committee talked about the need for an online dashboard that has certain long-term plans and studies specifically referencing the school use study from the elementary level. So the committee is looking at publicizing and making these long-term plans. On the note of long-term plans, there was positivity expressed towards, and this is a long-term, not in the works right now, but a goal to move towards of one elementary school for all of the kids, rather than maintaining three buildings long-term. And the final biggest thing goes back to the Green River School. The Planning and Construction Committee is very keen on being kept up to date with when the school will be decommissioned, and will go back under city responsibility to do things with.
Any questions or comments? Okay, great. Our Legislative Representative, Member Denieve?
I have a report before that, though.
Oh, you do? Sorry.
The School Committee Handbook Ad Hoc Committee.
Oh, sorry, skipped over you.
That's okay. I just, I have it in front of me. So maybe I could do that one first.
Yes, please do.
We met, that would be Member Sexton, Vice Chair Martini and I are in that Subcommittee. And we met on March 25th in a working session format and created headers and a table of contents. We made a list of operating procedures. And we discussed that we would like to retitle the document to be GPS School Committee Member and Community Resource Handbook. In doing so, the document will accomplish the need to accommodate current and new school committee members, as well as community members. So I have an entire, we did so much work, I'm so proud of us, I have an entire list of headers. So some of these are going to need some input from the full committee. We recognize that there were some topics that were, that needed more deep discussion. So I'm wondering how you would like that disseminated. Would you like me to read it to you now? Or would you like it to be sent in a format that would work to gather input?
I'd love to hear it now. And I'd love to hear which items you think the full committee should consider.
All right. Warning, because it's long.
Okay.
That's why I asked. Our suggested headers, subheaders, and topics are a statement of inclusion. That is something that we think will need a little bit more of a deep discussion. Mission statement, also a deep discussion item. Code of Conduct with Consequences. Community Frequently Asked Question and Their Needs, potentially something that we would survey our community and conduct that through the summer. An acronym breakdown page, a goal-setting process for the committee, our budget calendar, our connection potentially to an academic dashboard, which is a set of metrics and data that some school committees have put in their in their handbooks. And we found several mentions of that in some of the samples that you sent us. But that would require some more deep discussion about what metrics and data we would use. The annual visitation to schools for facility assessments. School committee partnerships with local community members. Developing a section for current and new members utilizing the resources we already have online. Creating a section for community members to obtain information on the role and function of the GPS School Committee and how to work with them. Getting a list of outward-facing members that are points of contact for families and community members. Making sure that our statement of inclusion and our mission statement that we develop is aligned with the district and our policies. Develop the code of conduct and refer it to the Policy Subcommittee, or do we do it as the Handbook Subcommittee? That was a question that we had for you. That's something that came up. And also, something that we wanted to talk about more in depth that we had some other questions about was how to create a community frequently asked questions database. How can we interact with the community through a survey? So all of these thoughts we had and wrote down, and we are going to need more input from all of you in order to fully flesh this out.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see how to proceed. I guess one thing would be to ask if there are any, what your burning questions are that we might discuss right now?
Okay, yeah, burning questions right now. Some of these things we've already talked about and sort of informally agreed upon already, like the acronym breakdown page, we've mentioned that that's something, we've identified that's needed. Vice Chair Martini's already mentioned the budget calendar. But, and we do our annual school tours. So that's something that's sort of already in the works. So there are things that are already in place. But the things I think that we really needed to talk about was the statement of inclusion and the mission statement, and how we can take our mission statement at GPS and maybe expand upon that and bring it into the handbook. So I'm sort of curious what people would like to see from that aspect of it. And the connection to the academic dashboard might not be something we can discuss tonight. And also, part of it, too, is just getting an idea of if there's anything that we didn't mention in this long list. Are there things that pop out that you thought you would like to have in this handbook that maybe we have not covered?
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, I guess one thing I could say that might help narrow our discretion a little bit is for things that are very obviously in the scope of a school committee member handbook, that if you want to craft things and we can get them on the agenda and have a discussion and vote on them, or give you feedback, or what process you would like us to follow, that seems like one bucket of things, like the inclusion statement and the mission statement seem very obviously within the scope of a student handbook, which is part of your charge. And then there are other items where I feel like, well, first, I should take responsibility in that it's my job as a school committee chair to give ad hoc committees a very defined scope of like what to do and what not to do. So in my mind, I would say that some of the elements seem a little bit outside of the scope of what I was imagining. So I would love to hear, I wonder if the handbook committee would consider, I'm wondering what the best process is. Maybe you, maybe you as chair, Member Denieve, could share with me kind of like what you think would be kind of like the scope of the handbook committee's work. And then we could discuss that. And I can, we can figure out from there what will be in the scope of the handbook committee's work. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, yeah, and so since, and so I guess the other, another bucket was your question to the full committee about if there were other items that the school committee would like to see included in the handbook. So let me see if there are any, is there any feedback from the committee on that, besides the items that were listed? Yeah, Member Sexton?
I'm not sure if I should be making a point of order or something like that for this, but it occurs to me, having heard a list read once, people are unlikely to know what's missing enough to know, to give you an answer right now. I think it would be really helpful if they had a document to look at and given some time.
Okay.
I would like to agree with that completely. And also, I just want to say that I really like the community focus of the vision that you've laid out, and that it is a document not just for the committee, but for the whole community. And I think that would really help people.
Thank you. So maybe that is a, next step is to ask the committee to submit that outline to us for basically approval and discussion, I guess. But I know there was a, we did share with the committee the work that you had shared with me. So did committee members not receive?
I did not see it in the materials.
Okay, all right. Okay. That may have been my mistake. So we'll, maybe we should bring it back then. I can, but I think that, well, personally, I have one thought of something that I didn't hear you list. And I think if members do have items like that, it is okay to share them tonight, but we can certainly revisit it. But I, you know, the law requires that we as school committee members attend charting the course. And I think we're supposed to submit our certificates to the city clerk's office. But there isn't much of an enforcement mechanism. I'm not sure how it gets addressed, how we keep track of which members have attended and submitted their certificates, and which ones haven't, and how to encourage people to do that if they don't get around to it. So maybe that's something that the handbook committee could take up?
Absolutely.
Any other feedback for the handbook committee?
I have a question.
Okay, and then, Member Goodwin?
So who keeps track of, then, if you, everybody's done their ethics test?
The clerk keeps track of that. Yeah, the city clerk.
I just wanted to say before I submitted my letter, I was very impressed by the website. You know, to see a school committee and then to see for new school committee members, all of the different pieces were there. And I was really impressed with that. That's never been something that's been available to people on our website. So I think that that's something that you should be very proud of.
That's definitely a section that we're going to sort of add in. So this would just be more of a broadening.
Yep. And those materials have been up there for at least, at least five years, I think. So it's a really wonderful resource. And I hope the community, as well as the school committee members, take advantage of that, since it is all up there on the website. Any other, any other feedback for the handbook committee? Well, thank you very much. It's kind of a new project for us, and I appreciate your patience. As I'm kind of feeling my way as chair, and I appreciate your feeling your way as a committee. I really appreciate your work on it. Are there any other items I've missed so far on our list, Member Denieve?
Sorry, me again. I have the Legislative and the Division Five Report.
Yes, great.
On March 27th, we had our MASCE-sponsored Day on the Hill event prep with Jason Frazier in our new library. We had members from Holyoke, Cadley, Pioneer, Gil Montague, and Mohawk School Committees present. And it was wonderful that Greenfield could host, and I hope that we can do so again. We discussed three main goals. Number one was rural aid, that we'd like to see fully funded at 60 million, rather than the 5.5 million presented in the governor's budget. Goal number two was an implicit price deflator of 1.35% that more fully reflects actual inflation, 4.5%. And goal number three, a commitment by the legislator to form a special education transportation tuition study group as described in the Thrive Act. Then the next step is to finalize meeting times with different legislators for the Day on the Hill, which is May 6th, as well as reach out to our other sister committees for carpool possibilities. A detailed schedule I will send out next week to you about that. This Day on the Hill prep day prompted a request for an expanded event, which will be taking place on April 25th via Zoom, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. We will form teams and work together to hone our messaging and leverage one another's legislative reach to advance our three goals. After the meeting, I will send out more scheduling information and a poll to see who will be attending. And we will have prepared documents to present to legislators at the event. You're welcome.
And now, Member Denieve, MASC Division Five Representative.
That was one and the same.
Altogether, very efficient. Thank you very much. Any questions for Member Denieve on either item nine or 10? Member, Mayor Disorga?
I probably should note, what are the three goals? Do you have them already?
Yes, the three goals were the rural aid. Well, I can actually send it to you. It's quite wordy.
Okay.
So I will, I will send that to you. But it's the rural aid, the implicit price deflator, and our desire to form a special education transportation tuition study group as described in the Thrive Act. And there are some things, maybe, that might be particular to Greenfield. So I'm hoping that we can discuss that a little bit more at the April 25th Zoom, or if anything is stewing in your mind that you want to bring forward about that. But the time will come soon when we will have to put in writing all of these requests and be prepared to present them.
Great. Thank you. Member Sexton?
I did just want to note for those following along at home who are like, but wait, Greenfield's not rural. They're right. So rural aid doesn't necessarily help us as a district, but it does help our sister districts. It helps our friends. And we just, at this, at the meeting that we did have, that we have already had, we discussed wanting to work in solidarity with one another. Because individually, as districts, if we keep competing, we lose all around. We all lose. But if we can find commonalities or ways to support one another in achieving our individual goals, then we can win together. So I just wanted to note for someone who is like, but why is that a goal? Why are we working towards that? Because it helps our friends.
Thank you. Any other, Member Martini?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to publicly thank Member Denieve for spearheading the bringing of this training specifically about the Day on the Hill, and how to be an effective advocate when we are there, to us and to the other districts from which school committee members attended. I feel much more enthusiastic and prepared, and looking forward to what comes out of the upcoming deeper dive, as you mentioned, later this month, and having things prepared to hand to legislators and be making a coordinated effort. We did not have this last year. And although we had a good time out in Boston talking to people, I just feel much more confident about it this year. So thank you very much.
You are very welcome.
I second that. You're breathing life into our Legislative Representative role, which has been long dormant. So thank you for that. And our MASC Division Five Representative, not to mention. Great. And Member Poiety was also our District Wellness Committee Representative. So we don't have a report on that unless the superintendent has an update.
At this stage, I believe, because the committee has endorsed the wellness program, now it goes to periodic meetings to review implementation. So.
Okay, great. All right. And now, we will vote to enter the executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Section 87, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Approval of executive session minutes from March 13th, 2024 meeting. The committee will not return to open session. May I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Motion for Member Martini. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Member Sexton. And any discussion? Do we need to do a roll call vote for executive session? Okay. Okay. Member Denise, will you call the roll?
Secretary Denise, I'm yes. Vice Chair Martini?
Yes.
Chair Johnson Mossad?
Yes.
Mayor Disorga?
Yes.
Member Goodwin?
Yes.
Member Sexton?
Yes.
Member Childs?
Yes.
We are unanimous and entering into executive session at 7:59 PM.